Good morning, good afternoon, good night, depending on where you're calling in from for this webinar. Welcome. My name is Adam Beck. I'm Executive Director of the Smart Cities Council for Australia and New Zealand. And I'm delighted to be hosting what is a bit of a special episode of Smart Cities Week ANZ 2020, which is a town hall meeting. And we're going to be looking at Smart Cities five years on, and I have a fantastic panel that's going to be working with us to reflect on five years, but also have a bit of a glimpse into what might be coming next. And of course, making sure that we bring our audience into this conversation as well. And I'll run through some logistics just in a moment. The first thing I'd like to do is share with you the agenda for today. We're going to break down the meeting into sort of three parts, and I'll work with my panel and the audience yourselves in taking a look back where we've been. Item three there is the now. We're going to have a conversation around where we're at. We're going to share some questions that we'd like you to answer. And we'll sort of wrap that part of the session up with a glimpse of what's next. Each of those will be about 20 minutes in duration. We'll finish on a couple of final notes and we'll have the meeting closed at 12:30 PM Eastern Standard Time, where I am in Brisbane at the SCC ANZ HQ. This webinar is being recorded. I'd like to highlight there that this is an interactive, as much as possible, virtually town hall meeting session. Please use the question box. You'll have that functionality. You can see there that you can dial up your questions and we encourage you to do so at any time. Given that this is a bit of a reflection as well, we'd certainly like to get input, feedback, thoughts and comments around your reflections as well. But also please put your questions there. I'll be directing those to the panelists. You can mention a single individual panelist if you'd like to, or otherwise we can throw to the entire panel. I'd also like to remind you that a recording, video recording of this webinar will also be available on our YouTube channel as of tomorrow. So feel free to jump into the Smart Cities Council Australia, New Zealand YouTube channel and share that around with your friends and family. This session, as I mentioned, is part of Smart Cities Week. Smart Cities Week is a little bit longer than its usual three-day event this year because of obvious reasons. It's been running since around about April and it will go until about October. So many, many months making up Smart Cities Week this year. We have a program very diverse, small things, big things, interactive things, listening things, training things, collaboration things. Head to scwaustralia.com and you'll be able to see the program and a whole range of online engagements that we have on offer. I'm also excited today to also announce that the Smart City Council partnership ecosystem is broadening. For those that know us and are part of our ecosystem, we have had membership to the supply side, private sector companies, all the way stretching back to 2012. As of today, we broaden our partnership ecosystem. And now we have on offer in the Australia and New Zealand region, four different partnerships that are on offer. If you head to our website, smartcityscouncil.com, you can download the relevant partnership packs, depending on which stakeholder group that you fall into. So we're very excited about that. Also excited coming 2021 is the Smart Cities Academy. And underpinning the academy is the Smart Cities Practitioner Certificate Program. There will be, I suppose, an early screening of the Smart Cities Academy coming up in October. We've sold out of one day intensive session of what we're calling the Future Cities Academy. And that is part of the program, the fuller program that will be offering and launching in 2021. But those sessions in October, and if you head to scwaustralia.com, you'll see those there. And we have a second one that's been just launched for Thursday, October 15. The Tuesday, October 13 one is fully subscribed, but the second one is now available. And it's a day-long intensive three modules. And that will enable participants, should they wish to choose so, sit the assessment items and go for that practitioner certificate. Encourage you to head to smartcityscouncil.com for further information about the academy and what's coming up there. So let's turn to our session today. We have the most amazing panel of guests. And like my two daughters, I love them both. You can't have favourites. I wish I could have included another 10 people on this panel. So many people worthy of sharing their reflections, those that were key to those early years in the Smart Cities movement, gathering pace in the region here, but equally newcomers into the fold that are doing some amazing work. But today we have on the line, we almost have this full panel. We did have a a technical issue and we weren't able to get Sandy on the line with us today. But we have Michelle Fitzgerald, Michael Komninos, Catherine Carrawan McManus, Meredith Hodgman, Sean Ordain, Brooke Dixon, Dr. Nathaniel Bavington, who are all coming to and have been part of the Smart Cities movement here in the region for many years. Some of them for many, many years. And we're going to look back and we're going to share that story of where we've been, as I mentioned, where we're at now, but also where we are going forward. I'm not going to go into detailed bios. That's what LinkedIn is for. I encourage you to go into LinkedIn and follow these fine folk, maybe send a connection request. And if you're lucky, they'll bring you into your network. They're all very kind and friendly people. I certainly know that. So as per our agenda, we're going to go and move through three agenda items now. I'll look back, the now, and then a glimpse into the future. This is a unscripted dialogue. We do have some talking points, but it is not Q and A. And one of the main reasons, one of the main reasons that we do that is that we like to bring in the questions from the audience. And I have the questions right up here in front of me. So please feel free to utilise that question box. And we look forward to tackling those questions as they come in. Let's get cracking here. So session one, let's look back. What you see here up on your screen is an image, the blurred out image there. It's a timeline that we constructed at Smart Cities Week in Sydney, late October last year. That's the blank version that you can sort of partially see on your screen there. And what we did is we sort of drew out on a big board, a timeline. I've got it right here in front of me in the office that extends from 2012 all the way up to the present day at the time, which was late 2019. And we asked our delegates to sort of plot on that timeline what they had achieved with respect to Smart Cities, what it was and what generally the timing was. And we're currently compiling that and that's being assembled into a publication at the moment that will release in a few months. But what I wanted to do is use it as a little bit of a stimulus now to kick off our discussion. And what you see in front of you now is my scrap board version of that, which I have augmented in a couple of different ways. For example, when Sean put up on the board that the city of Wellington had released its Smart Cities vision. Of course, that was in 2011 and I hadn't even gone back that far on the board. So this part of the board that you see where my mouse is moving, I've had to add to it. And of course, as we have a conversation with Catherine as well, we'll see that some Smart Cities activities and efforts have gone even way back into the era of sort of 2006 through to 2010. So with that, this is where I'm going to start. I'm going to start with Wellington. I'm going to start with Catherine as well. Catherine, I have to go to you first and Catherine is on audio with us. Catherine, you were with IBM in those early days. In some way, I kind of reflect and consider that, you know, you were part of the invention of this idea. Can you share with us what was happening back in 2006? And how you feel the journey has been sort of up until now? What can you share with us?
Oh, thanks, Adam, and thanks everybody for joining the call. Back in 2006, the focus of Smart Cities was on very, what I would call heavy intelligent transport solutions. There was a lot of focus by Cisco, IBM and others around essentially, you know, very large, you know, quite expensive implementations. And that was very much around transport and tolling. And that was driving a lot of the conversation around Smart Cities. The official launch for Smart Cities happened a little while after that in the launch in Shanghai, of which I was there under Sam Palmizzano, who was the previous president of IBM before Ginny. And the focus then was how could you create more accessible Smart Cities? Because to be frank, not many cities have the budgets of the sorts of capital budgets that the American and Singaporean government and cities like that could afford. So it was a very top-down approach, Adam, back in those days. And very much focused around large utilities and in the transport sector.
Catherine, were you working with cities? Were you pitching to them?
We were. And in fact, we had a lot of success with the big project we did in Rio de Janeiro. And that was the Intelligent Operations Centre hub, which was built. And I had the fortunate opportunity to go and visit that and meet with my peers. That came out of disaster recovery. That was the whole focus around these intelligent operations centres. But, you know, as I said previously, it really wasn't in the hands of smaller cities. It was very much focused around, you know, the top 50 global cities that had more centralised control across all of the aspects of the city.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Catherine. Sean, we're going to speed up now and head into 2011. Now, 2011 is the year that City of Wellington releases its Smart Capital Vision. I'm assuming that there was obviously some lead time before the release of that document. What can you share about those early years and where that Smart City vision came from and why?
So I was there for only six months before the release of the vision. So I only saw the final bits of gestation. But in the early 2000s, Wellington had gone through a bit of an identity crisis with, we viewed ourselves as being a grey civil service town. And we saw creativity and innovation as our key route to the future. And so we had a creativity and innovation plan back then. And then in 2011, we switched to, we realised that digital was a key part of that future. And we'd already released our Free City WiFi. We had our own telecommunications company at that time. And we realised that we were part of that future too. And our organisation had to learn to navigate it, which is where that came from. And then that was immediately embedded into our economic development plans and to our wellbeing plans. And basically formed the foundation for the next decade.
We'll come back to your multiple generations of Smart City strategy and planning later on, Sean. Thank you. Thank you for that. For those that can see the screen, the big red pin there, late 2012 is when we were born, Smart Cities Council. It was Seattle. It was the Pacific Northwest. It was game on, big vendors trying to sell to City Hall. Some amazing solutions that would help with their urbanisation challenges, among many things. And if we keep sort of trotting along a little bit, that red elliptical shape between 2013 and 2014 is when we release the Smart Cities Readiness Guide, our Handbook for Cities. So we speed up to 2015. Going on in 2015. And the flags that you see scattered across the screen there are sort of those nations that started advancing at a national level, a Smart Cities programme. And just for those that may not be able to pick up the differentiation, this flag here, the first one in the list under 2015 is New Zealand, where the Australian one is sort of up the top of the line over there around 2016, 17. So we see Obama White House Smart Cities Programme in 2015, September 2015 launch, the Modi Government's Hundred Smart Cities Mission in India. So things are picking up pace. Sean, just very quickly coming back to you before I then go on to Michelle and the rest of the team. 2015 through 2016 sees the New Zealand central government invest in a Smart Cities programme. I think Auckland, Christchurch, Wellington. We're talking four years after you released your first plans. What can you share about that sort of 12, 24-month national programme that New Zealand, you know, technically as a first starter off the block embarked on?
What happened is after we started to get some runs on the board, Christchurch and Auckland appointed their first innovation officers and started pursuing the same kind of goals, but in a slightly different way to reflect their communities. The central government realised that if they didn't move, local government would move without them. And there's nothing a central government servant hates more than being outstripped by a local government person. So we couldn't have that. So we combined together to start to work out what our national policy direction should be. The review was extremely useful, but we still yet to see that national policy emerge all this time later.
Okay, we do hold out hope. Michelle, 2015 is a big year for you. You become the City of Melbourne's first Chief Digital Officer. Tell us about going into that role, sort of out of private sector from memory into a chief digital officer role. That was probably early days when CDOs and CIOs and the like were sort of being established at that level within local government. What was on your desk when you rolled up for day one? You know, you've built the lab since then. You've gone on to, you know, be one of the highest accoladed, awarded municipalities globally in Smart Cities. What can you tell us about 2015 and the years shortly after?
Thanks, Adam. Good morning to you and to fellow panelists and everyone. It's, I just love events like this. It's great to connect to people, particularly when you're at city going through curfews. But casting mine back to 2015, I was actually the third Chief Digital Officer to be appointed to local government in Australia back then. So I think the first was Cat Mattson in Brisbane, who's still there. The second was in Canberra and we were the third. And I was really fortunate. We'd recently had a new CEO come into our organisation. He actually set up a whole Smart City division. So I was brought into lead a team of about 30 people who were basically continuing projects that had already been up and running for quite some time in the organisation. So by the time I joined the city in 2015, we'd already had our city lab up and running for a couple of years. We were probably on to our third or fourth annual innovation festival. We'd already been running a number of smart infrastructure trials. And I think there was a really big campaign, some of you might remember, about emailing trees. That was one or two years earlier. So I was really fortunate that I walked into not just a team, but an organisational culture that had already had this culture of innovation up and running for many, many, many years. And one of the first things we did, again, this had been set before my time, but we participated in IBM Smart City Challenge, which Catherine was one of the original founders. So there's a lot of momentum when I hit the ground way back then.
2015 is also a year, I believe, Nathaniel, you enter the role of Smart City Coordinator at Newcastle. What was awaiting your first day on the job with respect to Smart Cities?
Good morning, everybody. Yeah, green fields. There was nothing in place. What I encountered was a few years earlier, 2012, our community strategic plan, which in New South Wales is our peak strategic document. It had this category called smart and innovative, but it didn't have any projects in it. And so there was an opportunity there to kind of flesh that out and suggested to the organisation that if we were going to label ourselves as smart and it's the first word in our corporate tagline, then we had to get a little bit serious about what that meant. But there was already a lot of activity in the city. There's a lot of city partners who are pushing on innovation ecosystem. Our first Smart City project actually was an IoT trial in one of our eight streets. Did some mesh network, did some pedestrian counting, did some smart parking. And that was led by people outside of the city, the city council. So it was really around a huge programme of understanding what this concept means and what it means locally. Big internal buy-in programme and making sure that all those partners are on the same page. We discovered actually a lot of people in the organisation already doing things that now we would call core business in Smart City, but they never called it that. So the introduction of this narrative really became a rallying point for locating these champions who are already doing things across diverse areas, waste library, like the champions that emerged out of Newcastle were not here you'd expect. In terms of vendor engagement in 2015, everybody was coming to us trying to sell a Smart City in a box, you know, the full stack. And we just had an instinct that that wasn't right and we didn't know why, but we didn't know at the time. And so we took our, you know, took our time and we sent people not just from the city, but from some of our partner organisations to different places around the world to really get an underground feel for what was happening in this space. And at that time, it was just me. It was the lone wolf and it was exciting. It was like a whole new philosophy being brought into the organisation. And yeah, I look back on it really fondly. I've actually really enjoyed the last week preparing for this in terms of taking my mind back and seeing how far we've come.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So we're still hovering around 2015. Brooke Dixon, you're in the depths of the ACT Government Director of Smart City, Regulatory Reform. You're tearing out analogue parking metres. And you head off on a whirlwind trip as part of the Churchill Fellowship Programme to study Smart Cities globally and you'll report a piece of work that becomes pretty informative for sort of the coming years. Talk us through your time at ACT Government. You had a couple of big projects, a couple of big wins, certainly focused around policy and regulatory reform. What was it like back then?
Yeah, thanks, Adam, and thanks everyone for joining us today. It's a real privilege to be with you all. So yeah, I mean, ACT Government, I was the Director of Smart Cities back in 2013, 2014. Our Head of Service, Andrew Cappy Wood, went over to Europe and saw all these cities right around Europe really heavily invested in digital transformation and Smart City technology and said, yes, we'll have some of that. Thanks very much. So I was given the job of putting together ACT Government's first Smart City Strategy, which was released around about 2013, 2014. And then, of course, rolling out a whole bunch of projects and programmes. And we worked, I should just say too, I should recognise that we worked very closely with the City of Adelaide, who was also making great strides at the same time. So some big free public WiFi projects, smart parking, smart waste and smart traffic monitoring, we've rolled out at the time. I think one of the things that we're proudest of and one of the things that people who know me, I continue to bang on about it. But you know, technology is only as good as the environment that it works within. So we've got to continue to modernise regulation, business processes, business practices, culture and institutions so that they can be in harmony and so that technology can do its job. So one of the things that I guess I'm really proud about is working with the Chief Minister at the time, Andrew Barr, to have a look at taxi regulations and to be the first jurisdiction in Australia to deregulate and to modernise our on-demand transport regulation to allow Uber and other on-demand ride-sharing services to enter Canberra legally. And of course, all the other states and territories followed our lead, as indeed they have around the world. And of course, there's more work to be done there. Regulation continues to need to be modernised. But that's probably something that I'd like to highlight there, Adam. And of course, going on the Churchill Fellowship, a fantastic opportunity. For those of you who don't know, please do Google the Churchill Fellowship. It's a remarkable opportunity to go around the world and follow your passions. Of course, it's probably all going to be digital at the moment, but that is the beauty of Smart Cities and Smart Technology. Nonetheless, bringing back some of that knowledge from Asia, from North America, from Europe to Australia proved really valuable. It was valuable in ACT Government. I know a lot of my peers and colleagues in surrounding local governments and indeed around Australia reached out. And it's been a fantastic attribute. Again, something I'd like everyone to, you know, focus in on is how much we can learn from each other and how we can really accelerate our journeys by building on best practice, by sharing our knowledge, by sharing our lessons and by not making the same mistakes twice.
Thanks, Brooke. Meredith, on this timeline here that no one can read, of course, there's a little note down here that you put, "The development of Australia's first Smart City trade and investment strategy." Well, where did that come from? What led the Australian government to go down that path and what was going on and what happened?
Yeah, that's a great question. Good morning, everybody. I'd just like to pay respect to the elders past and present from the Gadigal Nation, from where I'm joining you today, from the City of Sydney. At that time in 2016, I was working for the Australian Trade and Investment Commission, where we try really hard to understand and map and promote Australia's strengths in terms of export, but also investment. So working with the world's leaders and multinational corporations around what are the opportunities here in Australia and also trying to help people to export internationally. So this was before the Smart Cities and Suburbs Programme. It was, I think it was roughly when Malcolm Turnbull was running for president. That was a faux pas that's probably going to come back and haunt me for a long time. Okay, so Malcolm was running for government and we started to look at all of the different ways that countries were promoting themselves internationally. And we wanted to understand what Australia had to offer in that conversation. So we mapped and analysed about 800 firms. We interviewed about 100 businesses. We really relied on a massive network of 80 offshore offices around the world to understand what people were looking for and what threats they had. And we worked closely with Data61 at the time and Peter Runcie and the team to sort of overlay quite a complex process of horizontal technologies against these pillars that we now know represent the different areas of Smart Cities, either energy, environment, critical infrastructure, services, etc. To get a grasp on what did Australia had to offer in this space at that time. And, you know, I'll never forget, Adam, it really did feel like we'd sort of licked our finger and waved in the air. But, you know, it came to fruition quite quickly because we, you know, we all, in 2017, when we took 28 Australian thought leaders, academics, startups to Barcelona, that strategy that we'd written, that narrative, if you will, around Australia's competitive advantage in the Smart Cities sector was really validated. And I can remember standing there in front of one of the world's biggest market leaders, who was very proudly presenting their GIS capabilities to us. And they're proud as punch that they could go down to the level of a coconut in terms of detail. And looking around at our small but humble delegation to know that there were at least two or three firms on that delegation that were very politely, very humbly, not saying anything at all whilst their capability could go down to the level of a cotton bud. And, you know, I just, you know, the drivers behind it were understanding how we sit and where we go and how we can inform both industry strategy, but also, you know, infrastructure strategy. But really what that taught me, and I hope, you know, a large portion of Australia, is that we were actually a lot further ahead than we realised.
Meredith, thanks for that. You used the word infrastructure. And that's my cue to bring in Michael. Michael, at the time, you're playing around with all things infrastructure, planning and growth of West Michael, at the time, you're playing around with all things infrastructure, planning and growth of Western Sydney, you know, a massive area that Australia is going to sort of expand into. You were on that, that was it, twenty seventeen, Meredith, that, that Barcelona trip. You were there, Michael. What was, what, what was happening in your world? And I think you're at the Greater Sydney Commission for, for a stint there. Was smart cities a couple of words that were being used at the time in, in that world of planning and development and infrastructure?
If I, if I go back in time, from my perspective, you know, two thousand and eleven in Sydney, the smartest thing going around was the idea of an e-ticket for transport. And that, that had dolled Sydney for a very long time. We had over two thousand fare combinations. And that was heralded as a great success. And then there was a future transport agenda, there was a future transport plan. And there was this touch point between smart transport, but not necessarily smart cities. So at the time, this is two thousand and fourteen now, I'm in infrastructure in New South Wales. We're writing a twenty-year infrastructure strategy. And we snuck in a reference to working with NICTA, which was the, the body that predated Data sixty-one. And the idea was that we'd be looking at some of these innovative techniques around big data, pattern matching, artificial intelligence, to better inform our infrastructure spend. And, and I can still picture this moment where I had, I had this penny drop moment where I was looking at a business case for a two billion dollar road. This is in two thousand and fifteen at the time. And it was relying on data from the two thousand and eleven census. And the trends were being extrapolated from the two thousand and six to two thousand and eleven trend as opposed to what was happening around us, which was, you know, Coles could tell me when I was running out of milk. So I said to the team in government, we have a wealth of administrative data. At the very least, we should have a go at trying to collect it and understand the place. And we did that in South East Sydney. And we ran a pilot project. We had over a hundred data sets. And we, we looked for patterns. And we created a pulse that showed movement, flows of people, of energy, of water, of waste, workers, residents, visitors. And it was great. It was this unbelievably valuable insight into demand in terms of activity. And then that was, that was being used to frame some of the infrastructure and service responses. But the problem was it was fragmented. You know, we had lots of different data sets, lots of different service providers. There wasn't clear sponsorship. There wasn't a clear owner. So in moving to the Greater Sydney Commission, I had this, this hope that we could novate that to them. And that the Greater Sydney Commission would look at a smarter way of doing planning, a smarter way of, of servicing growth and change. And the unfortunate situation that we were in was that we had such a short period of time to produce results. We had six months to produce strategic plans for Sydney, that there wasn't an appetite to take that risk in developing those plans. So it's been a bit haphazard. There's been lots of good, lots of good starts, lots of point solutions. But I think we're still, with the exception of places like, you know, Melbourne and, and Newcastle that have had the ability to create a platform and ecosystem environment. There are still some cities that just haven't been able to create that scale as a city. And I think, you know, I know I'm jumping the gun a bit about what happens now, what happens next. But I think that's the critical thing that's missing. And I think it's the thing that could have gone a little further with the city deal work that we did. So in Western Sydney, they're moving in that way now. And the smart cities plan that you've got there, that Red Oval, just under the flag in two thousand and sixteen, I think it pointed to it, but it probably wasn't deliberate enough in making it happen.
Just on national plans for a moment. I'd, I'd like to get kind of, I want to do a snap poll, okay, with my panel here. So for the Australians, which are all of us except Shaun, well, I mean, we're all Australians in some way, aren't we? And we're all New Zealanders. We, we're all part of the one region. The smart cities plan in Australia gets released June, July, two thousand and sixteen. I mean, correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, but I mean, we, we were pretty pumped up, weren't we? When, when, when that hit, hit sort of the airwaves. I mean, there was, there was certainly some excitement in the air. What, what do you feel has sort of been the impact of that national plan, which technically still exists today, three ministers later, a couple of prime ministers later as well? What, 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 what sort of, how would you describe in, in sort of, you know, fifteen words or less, the impact of that national programme in Australia? I'm going to open the floor to, to anyone that might want to respond to that. How important was that? That programme, that plan that still exists today?
For us, it was, it was really important. We'd already done a lot of work with the state and had a big programme underway, but it was just another bit of evidence that the world was shifting in this direction. It was really important for us and obviously very exciting when the, the, the budget for Smart City and Suburbs was announced. I think it's a lost opportunity though. It, it should have been funded ten times what it was. And, and the fact that it hasn't really been pushed forward beyond the city deal layer, I think is, is a bit disappointing.
Yeah, okay. Other thoughts from the team?
Yeah, it's Adam Brook here. I agree with what Nathaniel said. Fantastic start, a lot of momentum, a lot of good things have come out of that. It certainly has raised awareness right across Australia. The fifty million dollars has been a great shot in the arm, but there's a lot of unfinished business. And certainly for me, I believe that we, particularly in the middle of the current crisis we're, we're in the middle of, smart tech and digital technology are going to be a massive part of the recovery of Australia's economy, of our future resilience. And so I can see even more reason for the Australian Government to double down on smart cities. And of course, as you all know, and as I'm going to say again, I also think it needs to be accompanied with a, a raft of regulatory reform and modernisation to get the most out of technology.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, Brooke. Catherine, I know you're not up here on the screen, but you're on the audio with us. You've, you've had your finger in, in a lot of those projects. What's your, your view of that programme's contribution to our smart cities effort in Australia?
Well, I, I think that for the first time in our history in smart cities, the, every city around the country was trying to work out how do we get on board? Prior to that, smart cities wasn't part of the discussion within, within local government. And despite a lot of cities not being successful, it did actually stimulate cities to look at three things. First of all, their data governance plan. I think there was a lot of focus of cities to align that to what they saw in value of data and how they built out a framework. And I know the Smart Cities Council have done a lot of work in that space. Secondly, it got them thinking about smart cities as accessible. And, and thirdly, I think what it also did is it forced a couple of cities to talk with their neighbours because some of the projects that got up and got up actually were combination. And we only have to look at Connected Cities Adelaide, where five councils got together, put in a very compelling bid and, and have produced an amazing result with an almost ubiquitous, you know, public access, you know, I O T network across, you know, the metropolitan area of Adelaide. But I do support Nathaniel's points there. And that is that in order to create momentum, you have to shift momentum. And I think that one of the opportunities we have now, particularly with COVID nineteen, is to align how we can actually have a tech-led recovery. And I would like to think that smart cities and intelligent infrastructure could be part of that, that stimulus and recovery discussions that governments, not just here in Australia, but also in New Zealand are, are looking for. Because if there's one thing for sure, just to close this out, five years ago, there were a lot of new startups in the space of smart cities. And some of them are still thriving and, and moving forward. And I think that it's a testament to the fact of that, that funding to enable local Australian grown, you know, companies to, to come to the fore. And, and that was very instrumental, I think, in making that happen.
Yeah. Thanks, Catherine. So, so we're, we're going to kind of wrap now this first part of the agenda, which is sort of the, the, the looking back. And we've, we've gone as back as two thousand and sixteen. And we're kind of, we've worked our way up, worked our way up until sort of now. Got a couple of questions in the, the question box here that are nicely timed for this, for this transition. And Shaun, I'm going to get you to start with a response to this one. Question coming from another fine, fine New Zealander, Mark Thomas. What's been the rough time and effort split between planning and delivery? How, how much has been planned versus how much has been delivered? Can you give a rough split, you know, percentage wise of time, planning smart cities, delivering smart cities? What can you give us a percentage breakdown?
In time, it would be eighty percent delivery, twenty percent planning. We're notorious for doing our operational change, embedding that culture, creating those digital dividends within our organisation and our partners, and then writing the strategy to justify it. And I think it's fair to say we've continued in that tradition. We're just going through another strategic conversation now. So that'll change to about forty percent by the end of this year.
Okay, I'd like one other response from someone on our panel about that one. Breakdown of time, planning versus delivery?
Adam, if I could offer a perspective, and that is it's very much linked to the level of sponsorship you have in your organisation. Because there's, there's been many examples of the planning, trying to gather internal resources and support, business cases. You know, the persuasive element of planning in some areas requires a significant amount of effort and then leads to fatigue. So, you know, I'd be interested in hearing from Nathaniel as well. But I think it's horses for courses, but Shaun probably benefited from having that, that warm engine. That meant that he could jump into application a lot sooner than others.
Nathaniel, did you want to take up that challenge? You've been, you've been sprinting on the delivery front of, of late. What would your breakdown be, planning versus delivery?
It might look like that, but that was preceded, of course, by two years of that, that engagement and collaboration and getting the ducks in a row to secure the, the big grants that enabled us to move so quickly and so holistically. Of course, every project that we do now, we've got fifty on the books this year, they all have their planning component. So I'm not sure that split's quite the right split. I'd like to throw into the mix a different split, which is between the, the not sexy, really important fundamental infrastructure and the sexy shiny things that you need to get the, the media, the buy-in. So that balance needs to be calibrated as well, very strategically.
Can I, can I address this sexy thing? If, if that's okay? You know, these words, sexy versus non-sexy. You know, we also use, you know, shiny widgets, you know, we use this widgets word. And for some reason, we think they're shiny. I, I, it's kind of always, it's always been of interest to me. Why have we plagued our agenda with, with kind of this widgets versus invisible stuff? Shiny, sexy versus unsexy. Can someone help me with, with this thing that seems to happen with our work? We all have it happen, don't we?
Yeah. Look, I think that the, the bigger mega trends around digital transformation are continually throwing things at a top of consciousness, top of, you know, the, the Facebook feed. And projects that are designed around those get more attention. It's, it's just the nature of, of the beast. And it's very hard to get the media to turn up to, to opening a new pit in, in the ground. But it's the pit that enables the stuff, right? So it's just that, I guess that's the split for me.
Yeah, okay.
It's the customer facing, that tension of, you know, the customer facing initiative gives you greater immediate political dividends. You know, the, being frank, you can, you can stand next to it. You've got a real person who can, you know, show emotion in engaging with the product or service. But if you're looking at those foundational investments, it's often one or two steps before you can get to that point. And there's often a degree of impatience and to an extent suspicion about whether or not it's needed and to what extent it's needed.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So we're going to move into this next phase, which is the now. Okay, let's talk about smart cities now. But what I'm going to do is I'm going to bring in our audience. There's a couple of questions up on the, on the question box. But I'm actually going to open up, open up some polling here. So as I navigate all of my controls and screens here, I would like everyone to be getting, getting ready to be on a device so that you can punch in a, a web URL. I'm going to show, oh, actually, this is all I have to do is advance forward. So can we get ourselves to a web browser? And this is for everyone, not just the panel, but all of our hundred plus delegates that are currently online. Head to a website called menti.com, M E N T I dot com. And I've got four, I've got four short, four or five short questions here, which are going to sort of prompt some discussion as well. This is, this is all about sort of the now and where we think we're at. When you get to menti.com, it'll ask you to put in a code, the code four eight nine zero five nine. And you should be seeing our first question that is, that's up on the screen. And I'm hoping that, I'm hoping that this will be familiar to many of you as we've been doing our virtual engagements for the last five or so months. First question that you should be seeing in front of you. Bit of a reflection on, on the past, but have our smart cities efforts made a difference? Big picture, you know, yes, no kind of thing.
Do you want to open the, do you want to open the voting, Adam?
Have I not, have I not opened it? Have I not opened it, Shaun?
It won't let me vote. I like to vote early and vote often.
Okay, that is on me. So it says that voting is closed. I don't know why. Okay, is everyone else having that issue as well? I use this all the time. I don't know what's happened.
Yeah, same here, Adam.
It's locked, is it? Wow, okay. Can we crowdsource some troubleshooting? What am I doing wrong? I'm clicking present. I don't know what's happening there. Let me try, let me try another browser for a second.
Go back to your menu.
Yeah, go back to my menu.
There should be a tick box on the side that lets you.
Saved, present.
Go down a bit. Okay.
It looks good. It looks good, doesn't it?
Well, I'm not smart enough, so you're on your own.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Shaun. Okay, so, yep, can't vote. Okay, well, this hasn't gone as planned, has it? So while I'm sorting this out, over to my panel. The question, you're going to start with this question. Have our smart cities efforts made a difference? I'd like to go Nathaniel, Brooke, Michael, Shaun, Meredith, Catherine. So Nathaniel, you're up first.
Absolutely. For the City of Newcastle, the smart city agenda has just become a really important part of how the city sees itself into the future. And, and in terms of our collective effort across the country, having that peer support and that capacity to share that Brooke mentioned before about making sure we don't make the same mistakes has been massively important for us to, to move as fast as we've been able to.
Thanks, Nathaniel. So just, just following on there. Absolutely. I'm going to say a hundred percent yes. You know, five, six years ago, there was a handful of strategies. Now we've got scores of smart city strategies across Australia. Adelos Delta, we've been involved in around forty ourselves. And there's scores more beyond that. We've got thousands of smart city, smart regions, smart community projects that have been delivered. A lot of them have very demonstrated very positive impacts for the community. Tick, we've got an increasing and quite a large community of practice. We've got a very much an embedded citizen-first philosophy, which is really important to have a very clear and strong smart city agenda. We're seeing smart technology increasingly rolled out in new developments, which is a massive tick. And I'm seeing an increasing interest from the state governments in the smart city space. So all that says to me that this agenda has moved a long way forward and that those who have been leading the charge have made a very positive difference.
Michael?
Yeah, there's, there's, just to build on Brooke's point, there's a lot of momentum from many different parts of the. Yeah, there's, there's, just to build on Brooke's point, there's a lot of momentum from many different parts of the ecosystem. Property developers, service providers, state governments, local governments. I think the, the customer has an, the citizen has an expectation that there should be an understanding of their context. So we're in this virtuous cycle now where this is now happening, whether any one actor likes it or not. This is happening. The, has it made a difference? Absolutely. It, it's happening, it's happening around us in ways that we don't even know. So everything from, you know, safety, air quality, you know, we had the bushfires, terrible bushfires earlier this year, and people were able to get an understanding of what that was meaning for their health before they had to leave the house. They may or may not put that down to smart city initiatives, but it did rely on things like the Internet of Things being deployed, sensors, information assets, data communication. I, I think the real strength we're going to leverage off is the COVID response. So right now there's an unbelievable cooperation between different governments and even different places within the health system and how we can respond collectively as a community. And I think if we can take those lessons and apply that to the, the rest of the city and the other sectors in the city, we'll supercharge the effort going forward.
Yeah, okay. Sean, I'm just assuming you're a yes as well on that front in terms of have we made a difference? Otherwise you'd be doing the way we're doing.
Yep. You, I mean, we got through a large earthquake in Kaikura because of our smart city capability. It's discernibly helped with COVID and also with helping position the national government. So, you know, our, our new Public Service Act has open government as a key purpose. Our new Privacy Act is starting to position government to interact in these areas. That isn't directly attributable to smart cities, but I don't think that would have happened without that conversation that smart cities had helped generate and crystallise those things in people's heads.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Meredith, thoughts?
I'm sure I, a lot of Australians share the sentiment with me that we all have a policy crush on New Zealand. But I, for the sake of conversation, I'm going to be a little bit provocative. And I would suggest that the proliferation of smart city strategies does not necessarily equate to impact. And that I would have loved to have seen the nation in a better position to be able to communicate the impact that we are achieving. So we might have made a difference, but I would like to see significantly more case studies that demonstrate ROI in language that is relatable to my mum. Language that helps people to understand the way off between privacy and security and efficient delivery of government services via technology or, you know, improvements to the environment or society through technology and to building a trust. So on the one hand, I think we started ahead of the curve. On the other hand, I would say that there are a lot of structural challenges that we face due in large part to, you know, the way we are as a federation. I, I actually think the Smart Cities and Suburbs Programme did exactly what it could ensure within its remit. What the federal government has control of at that time and at that place, it did a really good job. You know, people look at local government, people look at local governments and want to talk about smart cities. But I can't tell you how many times I've had to explain to people that local governments have a very particular authority and a remit. They have an act that we follow and, you know, we don't actually control the emergency services, for instance. So it was a very long-winded way of saying that I, I'm really looking forward to the formation of the National Cabinet and that collaboration at the state level. Because I do believe that for impact in Australia, for smart cities to drive impact in Australia, it has to be scalable. And that means greater participation from our state.
Thanks, Meredith. Catherine, what would you, what would you add to this in terms of, you know, smart cities making a difference?
Well, I think that, I mean, I agree with everything that's been said. I suppose it's, it's relative though. I mean, when we're talking about a difference, difference for who? And I think that we still have a challenge to make smart cities more equitable. And it does seem to be still the, the challenge for smaller local government authorities to be able to have the skills and capability to deliver on smart cities. And I think that efforts need to be matched also against enablement and support. Because that is, that's an area that as, you know, from a state and a nationwide, we still struggle to have, you know, the capabilities around that, you know, supported. But look, all in all, if I look back at early days in smart cities to where we are today, Australia is on the map. We weren't on the map. And the fact that we've got great collaborations with the UK and Singapore. But the reality is Australia is unique and we have to build solutions that work for Australia. And I think that we've come a long way in the great work that's been done on cities on this panel. And, you know, if I look at our, across our portfolio, so we have sixty council customers and they're all at varying levels of maturity. And some would argue that they're quite advanced, others are really struggling to try to get their first project off the ground. And I think the one thing as an industry we can really help is sharing the case studies, sharing our knowledge and our time and, and really helping with the skills and enablement piece. Because I think that's where we, we struggle a bit.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, panel, for helping me tread water while I got the technical issues up and running. And shout out to Charlie Hales, who was the winner in terms of giving me the tip to unlock the, the voting. You'll also notice that Michelle has dropped off the video. As some may know, Melbourne is in a, a level four lockdown at the moment because of COVID. And there's been a, a technical issue that she has had to go and address. She will hopefully be back. She's in the, in the background, I believe. So she, she may join us again soon. So we're still in this agenda item on the, on the, on the agenda around the now. I'd like to send us into a more detailed question now that's on the, on the screen. So breaking down the barriers. So we've been at this for, I don't know, since kind of, let's, let's use two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. We've been at this almost a decade, almost a decade in part. I want to talk about breaking down barriers. We always use those as the things that stop us from doing good things at times. This is one of the questions, you know, do you agree strongly? Do you disagree? And I've, I've noted down there what I think are some of those global barriers that are often cited, you know. Where are we at with the business case? You know, funding and financing is always, is always one, political leadership. These, these statements put there, you know, we are primed to scale, are we? Do you agree? Do you disagree? How clear is the business case? So we've still got over a hundred people online. So really, really hoping we can get some, some participation there. I will ask my panel, as these numbers on this, on this chart bobble around a little bit. I, I welcome your thoughts or reactions. So I open the panel. What are your thoughts and reactions to what you're seeing here? There seems to be a little bit of hovering around the sort of the two to three range. Welcome back, Michelle. Thank you. What, what has anyone got to say from the panel about what you're seeing in front of you here?
Adam, Brooke here, just very quickly, I'll just say that, yeah, it's fair enough. About three of the business class, there's a lot of smart city projects that it's quite clear that we can get a return on investment and we should be pushing ahead with those ones. There are others that I think, I think are still marginal. And we've just got to be a bit careful about how we play around with those ones. Funding and financing, all I'd say there is we need to start looking internally at our existing budget, budget allocations, both recurrent and capital. I think there's too much focus on grants and PPPs. Political leadership, I think we need an increase there in terms of the federal government and probably a touch more in terms of state governments. And prime to scale, I just think that that's a function of, we are still on the journey. There's still a lot of testing and trialling and pilots going on. But I think, you know, in twelve months' time, Adam, we're going to see that click up quite highly.
Okay. What else, folks? Is anyone concerned about what they see here? Sean, Sean, you've been at, you've been at this since two thousand and eleven. Does this represent what's going on in your neighbourhood?
Yeah, I think the prime to scale one might be a little bit higher for us just because, you know, you've got leaders like Michael Down and Christchurch and Jeanette and Hamilton and more and more local governments in New Zealand are basically figuring out what this means to them and doing stuff. The other one is, as the civil service and its various institutions start working out what they're about, we're starting to see a bit more of the base course being laid. In terms of business cases, I've never been convinced that business cases were the best way to do this. I've always thought that it belonged more in HR than finance. So, yeah, it's never been clear to me.
Yeah, okay. Michelle, we are reacting to the, the poll we're in at the moment, asking our audience sort of, we're in the now session. What, what are your thoughts and reactions to what you see on the screen here?
So Adam, this is where the audience sees they are today in their own organisations?
This is our view of the industry.
The industry, okay. Looking apologies that I had to drop off, being the head of technology means occasionally get called in to deal with technology issues. Look, I think, I, I must admit, I'm a former consultant, there's nothing like a good business case. It's interesting to see the, the reaction to the business case point there. And I think with smart cities, because so much of what we're doing is still in the kind of test and trial environment. And you don't have all the data to necessarily prove and cover off every potential benefit and risk dimension and so on. That what you're looking to implement is crystal clear, could be, you know, looking at rolling out new sensors or 5G test beds or whatever. And I, I think for me, the test and trial opportunity is one of the biggest ones we have. And we're seeing a lot of great cases of that in the smart city space in Australia and globally. And testing and trying gives us a case to build some data for business cases. And sometimes when you've got enough data coming out of that, you don't, your stakeholders have enough to work with rather than requiring all the formal documentation. But I think that's one where I certainly see my organisation, we constantly go through this, you need a business case, you don't. And we're still working through that one. So really keen to hear what other organisations are going through on that front.
Okay, thanks, Michelle. I'm going to ask one more panelist to give a, a reaction, their reaction to this, the results of this question before we move on to the next one. Who wants to take that challenge up?
Oh, I'm happy to, Adam. Can you hear me?
Yes, absolutely, far away.
I think we are primed, ready to scale. So we're grown up, we've, we've come a long way. The foundation is there. It's really what people do with the foundation. I really agree with Sean's point. I think that if we look at globally, there's too much focus on something having an out, having an outcome that is purely based on a balance sheet. That's not what smart cities movement is about, and it never has been. And this has, I think, been one of the challenges of smart cities is that if we are trying to create better places, better capabilities for communities to thrive, it is about what we can do in economic development, but it's also equally important as to what we do with social value and sustainability. And I think that we are, we are at a very interesting time in our history that obviously with the pandemic, the global pandemic, with a potential economic crisis that's looking down the barrel. I think the primed, ready to scale is going to be the kicker here. And given the collaboration that's going to be needed for us to move forward, political leadership, I think, will become, you know, a, a major driver here. And I can't also underestimate the, the concept of, not the concept, but the importance of collaboration and the ability for different layers of government, the ability for the public and private sector to work together. Because that's, that's what's going to push us forward.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Catherine. Let's, let's jump on to the next question here. What, what work would you prioritise? Okay, I've, I've put five up here and you have to work with those five. I'm not giving you an other. But i- if you had to prioritise out of those five, procurement, you know, working on procurement, better procurement, more creative, better funding, financing, business models, business case, better collaboration, building data leadership. Or it might be that we need better tech. What would you prioritise there? There's some, there's some pretty big clusters starting to, to, to emerge, to emerge already. Collaboration. Okay, while the bubbles are moving along, I didn't realise collaboration would be so large there. I mean, kind of kill me now. I mean, I've been hearing that collaboration's been, you know, one of our Achilles' heels for the last decade. Are we still not working out how we can work together? Can someone give me, can someone talk me off the ledge here with collaboration? What's going on? Sorry, Brooke, and then Michelle.
Sorry, sorry, Michelle, great. Just, Adam, I just think it's a function of people are really excited about this space and are still learning a lot. So collaboration is a great way of, you know, sharing the learning. So I don't think it's a bad thing. I just think that people are, are learning a lot. They want to share and they want to know what's happening. So I, I take it as a good sign.
Yeah, okay. Michelle, sorry, yes.
Yeah, I read it the same way, that people are prioritising it and they're doing it. And that's the great thing about this city space, we can all learn so much from one another, not just here in Australia, but abroad as well. And to give you an example, the 5G and anything's test bed we kicked off a year ago has twenty-six partners. And we've worked really closely with the city of Sydney on that test bed. But we've also drawn heavily on the cities of Dublin, New York and Bristol. And there's a whole bunch of other projects I can name, but I think we can only, we, we learn so much from one another. And particularly in government, where we've got some really cautious stakeholders, it's even more important to show where things are working in other cities to give that, that confidence to stakeholders.
Yeah, okay. Has anyone got a reaction to the procurement one there?
Well, normally, smart cities discussions with Australians turn into a therapy session about procurement, in my experience. But in my experience, I live in a different system. Procurement's not really a problem. Procurement advisors can be a problem, but that's easily fixed. On the collaboration side of things, I think the reason that it's always coming up is the, the line keeps moving. What good collaboration looks like today is not what good collaboration will look like in a year's time. The other point is, as you collaborate, other people join the journey. With the long experience that some people on the panel have, we learnt an awful lot over this. If you turn up tomorrow and start, you're going to have to learn that too. And the only way you can learn is from experience. So you end up repeating yourself.
Sean, thanks for, thanks for those insights. Last one before we move on to our final agenda item of sort of looking forward and a glimpse of what's next maybe. This question's a bit provocative. I am interested, however. Who needs to up their game when it comes to smart cities? Who needs to up their game? This could be who needs to do more, who needs to do things differently. Who needs to take more of a lead? Who needs to up their game? Okay, I'm seeing the voting coming through, but I'm not, the bars aren't changing for me. Oh, there we go. Okay, it's kicked in. And I think when I scanned down our delegate list, we had a pretty okay balance across public sector, private sector, third sector. Does anyone dare to comment on that? Has anyone got any reactions to that?
Just while you, while we're waiting there, Adam, I think that pretty much reflects the hierarchy of, of, of smart city policy and leadership. Possibly, I'd probably, because of that hierarchy, I'd have the national government at the top for myself. Possibly, I'd probably, because of that hierarchy, I'd have the national government at the top for myself. But, you know, if we have strong policies in place, if we have strong leadership from the federal government, state governments, and our local, local governments and cities, then the vendors, advisers and researchers can all play their...
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Brooke. Any other comments from the group?
Yeah, Adam, I think there's a role in the the top two in enabling and promoting that scale that Catherine mentioned earlier. Councils, municipal levels of government generally have less revenue flexibility, less discretionary expenditure. They're flat out doing existing jobs. Without without that leadership, you'll get point solutions in existing budget allocations. Now, what am I talking about? If there's a budget for waste, you'll get smarter waste. But if there's a need to look at how waste relates to the environment, relates to resource consumption, and it requires an extra 10% now, so that you can save 30% in the future, you need that flexibility to be able to take advantage of that. And the the balance sheets of the cities just are not as strong as the other two.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to head to some of the the questions from the audience now before we then move on to the next, the next and final part in terms of having a glimpse forward. To what extent would much of the smart cities work have happened regardless of government?
Do you think that means regardless of state and federal governments?
Well, I think I think involvement of of government there. As a private sector practitioner, I hear a lot about smart cities narrative from government. Meanwhile, we're quietly getting on with it in the private sector.
I think the key word there is city. Right? So if the local government is not involved, is the custodian of the city, then I can't see how that that innovation and technology adoption can get across sectors. In terms of how can it happen without state and federal government, I think it it has. And and it was the cities that that picked it up and ran with it and led the charge in Australia and really forced the hand of of some of the bigger players.
Yeah, okay.
In those early days when it was Canberra and Adelaide, like they were, you know, there was no one else talking about it, you know?
Yeah.
I'd like to build on that, Nathaniel. Before Canberra and Adelaide, it was Geraldton. It was Townsville. It was actually Christchurch, right? So I think that what we see is that all too often, I think vendors look to the the sort of the big cities as being the vehicle to pull this through. But the reality is that, you know, this is only going to happen if all cities are engaged. And if cities have been given the mandate through the support of leadership and government, then that is going to help us all, isn't it? So, look, I I think that who needs to up their game is is a very good point. And really, I just reiterate my point, there are cities at various levels of maturity. And, you know, maybe we should, as, you know, in the vendor world or in the research world, focus on trying to help those cities that need that skills and capacity building, so that they aren't so reliant on handouts from government. And I think that's a culture in this country where we look over our shoulders for a handout. And that's not the culture in in other jurisdictions. So, yeah.
I'd totally agree with you there, Catherine. The private sector should be leading the conversation to a large degree. I mean, it is ultimately about collaboration and you need a sort of a piece from every single pie. But realistically speaking, do you want the government to intervene in everything? No, that's not really what it's it's there for. Government can create some amazing levers and some amazing carrots. And, you know, we'll often look to industry for advice on how best to craft those things. But realistically speaking, you know, the innovation and the the business models, government's learning from industry and industry is doing some, getting some great runs on the board.
Team, we're moving to our third and final agenda item here, a glimpse of what's next. So as of right now, we have 3,433 days until it's 2030. Many sort of describing this as the critical decade. I could reference the Sustainable Development Goals. I could reference the Paris Climate Agreement. And to bring it more back to home right here, right now, you know, I could reference COVID. Open floor, I'd I'd like you to share your your sort of glimpse of what's next for smart cities, whether it's you want to share what you're actually doing, but probably more so based on the conversation we've had today, the results of some of the the feelings coming through on the survey. What do you think our next looks like? I'm open to anyone kicking off.
I'll start, Adam.
Go, Michael.
So, pre-COVID, pre-bushfire, pre-drought, pre-flood, there there was a, I think there was a mood to to test whether we could reset some of the the ways that we were living as cities and regions. You know, inequality starting to diverge in terms of who's doing well, who's not. Those those jobs of the future aren't necessarily available to everybody. And I think what COVID has shown us is that we need to be very deliberate with how we use our resources, very deliberate with how we use and support our people. And I think that's what has to happen over the next 10 years. It's got to, it's got to be a reset. I'm usually quite impatient in this space. It's quite frustrating and working in and around government at times. But I think we can't waste this crisis. And there's a lot of good that's happening because of this crisis in terms of how we're responding as both private sector, public sector and the community. And I think we've got to drive to a reset where, you know, for those of us who have kids, you know, my son's going to be 20 in 2030. And he needs to have a better quality of life than what I had. And, you know, two or three years ago, I wasn't sure of that. And we've got to make sure that it can happen.
Yeah, thanks, Michael. Who wants to share next?
Yeah, I can jump in. I couldn't, I couldn't agree more about the the decade that matters story. And in terms of our, I guess, phasing of our maturity at Newcastle, we've just finished our first redesign of smart city. And we've broken it apart and we've now brought it intentionally into contact with our sustainability and energy innovation portfolios and our economic development. And the three of those together really go a long way to structuring how we think Newcastle looks into the into the future. And I think that's where the big gains are going to be made. I agree with everything Michael said about not wasting this opportunity of COVID. But please, let's all keep our eye on the big game, which is, it really makes COVID look like a ripple in terms of the impacts on economy, on society. Yeah, that's that's my view. We need to, we need to pivot the whole machine to focus on that challenge.
Thanks, Nathaniel. Who's up next?
Adam, sorry, Shaun, you go.
We'll go Shaun then Brooke.
So the New Zealand government will spend 17 years worth of discretionary funding this year. That is an enormous amount of investment, and it's an investment we're borrowing from our children. So we're very conscious of that. And that's why you're seeing things like wellbeing ideas starting to drive things as opposed to GDP. But we need to keep in mind that COVID has increased global hunger by 130 million people. And that's not the people who are hungry, that's people who are starving. That set that development goal back 20, 30 years. So as as we look to transform, we have to remember there are people who depended on the status quo to eat, to drink. There are people who, you know, I sit there and go, wonder if I can afford a better electric car. There are other people who can't move around at all. And the challenge we've got is, as a society, we have to balance that need to transform with that need to ensure. And if we look at where that takes smart cities, I think the next generation of smart city projects won't take place in local governments. They will take places in hospitals, they'll take place in banks, they will take place in the institutions which make up a city, not the institutions which govern a city. We're already seeing that ourselves. Some of our most important and interesting adaptation projects are nothing to do with the city at all. They're taking place in banks. And that's the way it should be. It's a city. It's a smart city. It's not a smart local government.
Thanks, Shaun. Brooke, you are going to go next as well?
Yeah, very quickly, I think that I'd like to see the smart cities movement work towards changing of those broader paradigms, be they economic, the move to wellbeing economy, be they workplace, the move to remote, smart, flexible working, or be they democratic for that matter as well. How do we roll out our continued modernisation of democratic processes and institutions in the digital world? I'd like to see that smart becomes BAU, just as sustainability over many years has worked its way to become BAU. And in that regard, second to point that climate change must be front and centre of our minds. And I'd also like to see a stronger consideration and dialogue about smart city ethics, privacy, security, and how we operate in a world of misinformation and other other sort of potential risks of smart cities or digital transformation, which we need to minimise, so we can maximise the benefit of digital technology and smart city technology.
Thanks, Brooke. So who wants to go next? I know we've still got Meredith and Catherine on the line. I think Michelle's just had to pop off. Oh, she, oh, she, she's back, she's back. Who wants to go next?
I would echo Shaun's comments, if you'd like. Sorry, Michelle, I saw your hand just pop up a moment ago. You know, good leaders leaders are going to use COVID to build trust. But great leaders are going to use COVID to change the boundaries of impact, really. And, you know, I've been, I've been saying for quite some time that it was time to move the conversation of smart cities beyond smart parking and to start really thinking about the vulnerable citizens in our community that are most at need and who who our governments actually are genuinely focused on their, like their attentions are genuinely focused on that segment of the community because they aren't necessarily served by the private sector. And Shaun's comments around food really, really come to the forefront there, you know? Whether, and that was always going to be the case before COVID or after COVID, you know, the bit, our, our, our food security is a real problem, our water security is a problem, our urban heat islands are a real problem. So, you know, how are we collaborating? And it's so great to see everybody here today talking about collaboration as a priority, but actually pushing those boundaries of collaboration and addressing the needs that can't be solved by the private sector is a really difficult phase. I'd love to see people think through it.
Yeah, thanks, Meredith. Michelle, over to you.
So many great points. So just to build on those, really at a local level, I think I see two key opportunities emerging through COVID. One is the fact that we've seen digital cultures being created overnight that we've been trying to build for years and decades, not just in our own organisations, but in our communities as well. So looking in our own organisation, the level of adoption of digital library tools has been phenomenal. Our libraries have never been so popular. It's just that it's all online. So I think about all the community members now who, you know, the only way they can access a book is to actually break through the barriers that perceive with technology. And they're, and they're doing it in so many cases. And I just think about, well, we'll take that and extend that through. Well, how do we continue to build trust in a digital world when so much going forward is dependent on the use, legitimate and appropriate use of community data? So that's the one, one opportunity. The other, I think, in our own organisations, so many councils now are seeing a real impact on their revenues over the next couple of years, whether it be parking rates and so on. Our sales and our stakeholders have no choice but to be ruthlessly efficient in the way we use our limited resources. And technology allows us to do that, whether it be through sensors, video analytics, AI and so on. So I'm really hoping this gives us a case to work with our colleagues to, again, help them build that trust in these tools and to roll them out at an accelerated pace compared to how we've been progressing.
Yeah, thanks, Michelle. Great points. Lastly, Catherine, a glimpse of what's next. What would you like to share with us?
Well, I think that there is a, an opportunity now for us to build marketplaces. So when we look at people, just look at, you know, the local community, the the local restaurants and and, you know, service providers. Really, it's about creating those connections. So I think that a smart city is that that actually puts buyers and sellers, whatever market they're pertaining to. And there's a really good example in Adelaide where the city of Prospect created these voucher system all online for the local traders to be able to provide food and meals to the local aged care, you know, Meals on Wheels. That was done through digital, but also done through the fact that the city recognised that people were disconnected and people who have vulnerabilities can use the concept of smart cities to actually bring those marketplaces together. I I couldn't agree more. I think we're going to see an evolution of the circular economy. And I also think that it is about social value, that too often we look at the bottom line. But what are we doing to in terms of increasing social equity? And that's what I think smart cities should be all about.
Catherine, thanks. Thanks so much for that. And also for the rest of the team, just very quickly, as I, as I sort of count down the remaining 60 seconds of this panel, I just want to share with everyone that on the 27th of August, we have our International Day as part of Smart Cities Week. We start with LA in the morning, we head to Israel. Early afternoon, we finish off with a sundowner in London with with Theo Blackwell, the Chief Digital Officer. So that's coming up on 27th of August. Head to scwaustralia.com for our other events that are happening up until October. Nathaniel, Michael, Brooke, Meredith, Shaun, Michelle, Catherine, thank you so much for taking part in this this town hall, reflecting back on five years, also chatting about the now and some glimpses into the future. Everyone stay safe, stay healthy, stay well, and look forward to speaking to you all soon. Thanks, everyone.
That was great.
Thanks, Adam. Have a good day, everyone.